September 28th, 5:30 PM. And we are having a special meeting of the City Commission. Uh, thank you all for being here. Let's, uh, rise for indications and. Hello, thank you for this evening. Help us to have a good and productive meeting. Thank you for this nourishing rain and continue to bless us. Um, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under our God, individual liberty and justice for all.
And I skipped a little bit. So roll call, we got, um, Commissioners Rutledge, Hector, and Bishop, and Mayor, and Commissioner Masso is out. We'll take it. And we're all jokes. That's okay. Um, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, I got a temporary use permit for, as am for the family who's in our car that need to get a two-year extension on since it expires between now and then.
Thank you. We'll make that item four C. And moving on to commission consideration. Item four A, public hearing setting the final military resolution, that has to be the resolution, 2023-09. You want to introduce this or you want me to?
Um, let me introduce you. I like to introduce the process. Uh, and I don't have a microphone, so I can speak very loud. Uh, the public hearings this evening are dictated by state law as to their order, the public hearing, the font within the advertisements, all dictated by state law. Uh, and it is, uh, to that extent that we will read the actual resolution in its entirety. Roxanne will in a few minutes. Uh, we had Zach here to talk about the budget. At first, we need to discuss and adopt the resolution for village. Then we go on to the budget and explain the changes we made since the last, uh, meeting where you asked us to drop from 6.85 down to 6.5 mils. Uh, so with that, if you don't mind, uh, lastly, Assistant City Commissioner Reiki, the resolution in its entirety.
Resolution 2023-09, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lake Helen, of Volusia County, Florida, adopting the levy of applicable taxes from Volusia County for fiscal year 2023-24, providing effective date. Whereas pursuant to law on August 21st, 2023, the Volusia County Property Appraiser mailed a notice of proposed property taxes to each taxpayer listed on the current year's assessment roll. And whereas the said notice of proposed property taxes advised the recipient of a public hearing to be conducted by the City Commission on this date for consideration of this adjusted sensitive general municipal budget and the proposed village necessary to fund the said budget. And whereas public hearing has been held as specified in the notice of proposed property taxes added according to an applicable law, Florida Statute 200.065. Whereas the gross taxable value for operating purposes not exempt from taxation within Volusia County has been certified by the Volusia County Property Appraiser to the City of Lake Helen at 167,573,760. Now therefore be resolved by the City Commission of Lake Helen, Florida. One, fiscal year 2023-24, operating mileage rate is 6.5 mils, which is greater than a rollback rate of 6.2299 mils by 4.33 percent. This res- resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption, duly adopted at the public hearing the 20th date of September 2023 at 5:30 PM.
Uh, thank you. Back over to you, Mr. Administrator. You said you wanted to do a few things.
I do want to do one thing. I want to read a notice of proposed tax increase. This particular document was published in the newspaper. Uh, and this is what I referred to earlier as having specifics as to the location in the newspaper, the size of font, and all the wording that is from the state statutes. I'll read it in its entirety. Notice of proposed tax increase, City of Lake Helen has tentatively adopted a measure to increase its property tax levy. Last year's property tax levy, initially proposed tax levy, 1,079,663, less tax deductions, reductions due to value adjustment boards and other assessment changes, 5,700. Actual property tax levy, 1,043,963. This year's proposed tax levy, 1,128,442. Now, uh, you must, if you've been paying attention to the budget, and I know you all have, uh, the actual budget is predicated on 1,049,663. Uh, that's how much that we, uh, will collect based on 95% of the amount that will actually be taxed. Uh, that also is a requirement of state law. We cannot place in the budget, uh, an amount that is 100% of what we expect. By law, we can only expect to receive 95% of it. That's it.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-09? Have a second? Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09? Is there any discussion from the Commission? Hearing none initially, I will invite Ann Robbins as a public card and wish to speak for this matter. If you would like to mark him. I hope it was not really good enough. I should be holding it closer properly. That's, that's far as. That's, that's, uh, this is far as.
Ann Robbins, 129 Maple Lane. First of all, I would like to thank you guys for dropping the military to 6.5 and stormwater fee to $59.51 per ERU. Some of the questions which I brought up at the last meeting went unanswered. So after I read my statement tonight, I would like to receive answers to these questions. You have put an additional officer for the PD in this budget. Is the new officer going to be co-enforcement and animal control? The chief does not feel that this should fall under the PD, but rather under City Hall. The unfilled position of Parks and Recreation Director, $60,000, now is being called the Events Coordinator. Why is this an exempt position? For six years, I managed the annual Stress Buster 5K, and that was and still is one of the biggest events that the city has. Yes, this person would be the go-to person for this event, but I cannot see the city needing a full-time person with no plan going forward for any other events. Why is Ivy Hawn not paying any fire tax? This is significant property, and God forbid if it were to catch fire, could be catastrophic. I know churches were exempted, but why are, why are schools now? $20,000 is budgeted for a historical survey of the city cemetery. Income from this line item is $1,000, so it will take 20 years to recoup this expense. People are being cremated instead of regular interments. There are pretty good records of sold lots and who was buried where when I retired. I can see possibly doing a survey as there was and probably still is a discrepancy as to the north property line, but to outsource the complete job is totally unnecessary. I also asked about the upper age Triple S water project, which was scheduled for the 2022 budget, and I did not get an answer. Again, this year, our financial department, which is part-time and outsourced, has increased to $71,500. When was the last time you got a monthly financial report or a variance report? These are my questions, so now if you can give us all some answers to these, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Ann, before you, before you go, I missed a couple of your questions. Um, the Triple S water project? What was your question, Karen, in the poll?
It was scheduled for 2022. When is the upper age? This is going to be done.
Okay. Um, and the last question about, uh, this is the last one. I'm trying to figure out that one.
The, the financial department?
Yes.
And when was, when did you get, when did you last get a monthly financial report or a variance report?
Okay. Um, well, I'll start on a couple of these. Um, the officer, the additional officer to put in the budget. Um, we, I don't think we really nailed down exactly what that position would be. It was a request from, uh, Police Chief to increase the department by one officer, and it was, that was pretty much the extent of the request. I don't know whether it would be, uh, within the Police Department or in City Hall as a code enforcement officer. I hadn't heard any talk about that. Um, so those have not been nailed down. Um, that's, as far as I know, the extent of the conversation that's happened was when the chief asked for additional officer to be put in the budget. Um, that was at a fairly well-attended meeting down at the conference room, and it, uh, we put it in basically a line item without any, any specifics there from that. So that's not much of an answer, but it's the honest answer.
Not much of an answer, but, um, I think we do need code enforcement. It's been neglected for a very long time. We had a full-time police officer who did both of those jobs.
Correct. And I remember the chief saying a couple of nights, a couple of meetings ago, that we do, the Police Department is still doing code enforcement. We just don't have a designated officer to do it. Um, it's more spread across, um, the department at this, at this supervision.
But nobody has been trained either.
I think they have, well, I think they have been trained where they would be doing it. I don't, we don't have a specific officer. I understand what you're saying. We have to replace one who was specifically designated for that. Um, the Parks and Rec slash Events Coordinator um, is an option for, for next year's commission, basically. Uh, we, I asked, I asked for it to be put in the budget, and we decided to put it in there, but it will be up to the next commission as to whether or not that's, that position is filled and what it exactly will look like. I have some wonderful ideas for it, but I won't be here. So, uh, so it's, and they don't even have to fill it. The budget gives them the option to fill it without changing the budget. They can fill it next year without having it in there, but they have to change and amend the budget. This way, they can perhaps do that without having to amend the budget, or they can just not spend them on it, which has happened with many items in the past. Um, as far as why it's exempt, I, that will just be up to, um, the law. It, it either will be exempt or not exempt based on the law. Um, we're not trying to, we're not trying to keep it an exempt position to enable anything. We're just, we're going to do it how the law requires. I think, I think you may be right. I think it may not be an exempt position. I don't know. Um, I'll throw this one back to staff. The, why the Ivy Hawn has no, not paying fire tax on the assessment? Fire said that the charter schools are exempt from the fire. Okay, assessments. They have to be stormwater, but they're exempt from fire. They're not exempt for fire coverage. Those, that's.
Exactly.
The cemetery survey, we've been looking at for several years. And the whole time I've been mayor, we, I've talked to it over several times with the Administrator that we are uncertain about several, um, key things around the cemetery as to where individual graves may be located, whether or not, uh, headstones have been shifting, things like that. We're really not confident, uh, with where, with our knowledge of, of the cemetery. And it's a function that the city has to do. We have to be able to administer that cemetery with confidence. And to my knowledge, the only way to get that confidence is to hire an outside company to, to do the research properly, to do the, um, I don't know exactly what all is detailed in that, but to get it, to get full knowledge of what's there so that we can administer it properly, we kind of, I think, have to do this.
Well, I can remember when there were two little old ladies who did the, did the whole administration of the cemetery. And I remember when they turned it back over because they felt they were getting too old to be able to do it.
Hmm.
And sent all the records down in all the little cigar box. And I don't have any idea whether that's still at City Hall or everything got thrown out or what the heck happened to it. But the records were pretty good at that point in time when I left.
It's still at City Hall in the little side room next to the administration office. Um, I've been using it to, uh, upgrade my records on the fact that it's still there. So it's, it's still there.
And that brings us to the upgrade of the Triple S water for 2022. I, I, when I first came mayor 20 months ago, I, that was my primary desire was to start working on the, the water distribution system. We've got a great well system. Um, thank you, Rick. Um, but the distribution system is, is showing its age. Um, and we've abandoned it for a long time, which is what we asked other boards to do, uh, till we, till we paid off the, the rather large grant that, or how we got those funds. We paid those off, uh, that had built the wells. And now we have that amount of income available to pay towards a grant for the distribution system. So we immediately started working on putting that distribution system together with the water master plan. We got that finalized, and, because you've got to have that kind of obligation now in order to get a grant. So then we started with the grant. We're still working on that. We're not too far from it. Soon as we get the money, then we can start taking up the city. Uh, but if we're working hard towards it, we've been working hard towards it for the whole time I've been mayor, and we've made a lot of progress. Doesn't look like it. There are no holes to be ground, but we are making real progress. And I hope that it'll start pretty soon. So there's, there's actually been a lot of progress made in that area. And financial reports or variances? Uh, staff, do you want to address that? I'm not sure exactly the nature of the question, but.
Yeah, so the, um, kind of historically since, you know, our board did the audit, the, um, you know, it's in the monthly bills, paper reports, um, and then you have the kind of preliminary near end, uh, review as well as the audit. Certainly if there was a desire of the commission for any other reports, it's very simple to run, um, from the system. So that's, and that could be really discussed and looked at at any point in time, depending what, what level of information was designed on a, on a monthly or a periodic basis.
Were there some reports that you had in mind? Would you, specifically?
Well, when I was finance manager, I provided the commission with a monthly financial report, which I was a variance report, so that they knew where they stood with the budget line items.
Okay.
And I, I thought it was something that everybody thought was a very, very, uh, good thing to have, to look at, and you knew where you stood as far as how much you had left in your budget for each line item.
Maybe we can look at something like that. I, I wouldn't mind at all. You know, a lot of times, reports are just a matter of customizing, and then once you've got it, no matter which button, it'll get into us. So, um, it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next blue card is from Linda Nada.
Linda Nada, Lake Helen, Bill, this. I'm going to pick up where Ann left off. Is this word?
Yes, I'm all pretty close.
Can you hear me?
Closer.
Go ahead and keep talking louder. I did a little help.
I don't know if I have a problem. Only less I'm yelling at somebody.
Don't tell me so. And hold it even closer.
Okay, well, I'm going to pick up where Ann left off on the variance report. I know it's been at least four months ago. I think it was in our first workshop that I spoke with Zach about the variance report because Ann had discussed that very particular report, which seems to me to be vital in knowing where we stand with the budget. Now, does that mean that we may have more money left on the budget, I think we might, that we may have to move over? Yeah, but at least we'll know, are we within the budget? For the next year, we may have to add more money to that budget. So I think that's an important document to have in our hands, especially when we're starting a new budget year. So that's all I'm going to say about that because I did talk to Zach about it, and he said he could put that together. The next question I have is I don't see much change in, which I know there's not supposed to be a lot of changes, but I have a question. This is probably going to have to go back to Zach. Last month, when Roxanne was brought in, um, and I'm sorry, Roxanne, I don't know your last name. I apologize, but, uh, this doesn't have anything to do about you coming in, okay? But at the time that she was brought in and presented to the commission, Mr. Evans had mentioned, though I had warned, that there was a contractor employee from Oak Hill that was a CA and had left and may possibly be interested in coming to work here in Lake Helen as a CA. And, um, at that workshop meeting, Roxanne was presented, and, um, Con Evans was not. And in fact, we have it on audio where Mr. Evans said that at this time, we do not need, absolutely do not need a contractor employee. So I took him at his word. We'll come to find out we had already scheduled a meeting two days after that workshop with Ms. Evans. So then, once I found out, I asked for the contract. I discovered in the contract that it had all of Mr. Evans' job descriptions. So of course I was curious. Are we going to have her as the new CA? So with some, I don't want to go into everything, but with some discussion with Mr. Evans, it was determined that there was a year, and I had a contract, that there was a one-year contract written with Ms. Evans, and her actual job was to work on FEMA. So we had quite a conversation about contracts because the contract didn't even mention FEMA at the time. And I had a bit of a problem with that. It looks like we're losing a money trail someplace if we can't follow FEMA just by itself. And, you know, they always say follow the money trail. Well, you can't follow the money trail. I don't even know if she's listed in this budget, $5,000, and she's got a contract for one year to work on FEMA issues. So if she's listed on the bottom line here.
Can I interrupt you for just a minute? I apologize for the interruption, but I, and I understand your questions, and we can get back to them, but I'm not sure that this applies to what we're, the motion we have on the table now for Resolution 2023-09, setting the military.
Okay, it probably doesn't. I'm wanting to know, is it, is setting the military, is that going to close out the budget? Because we only have two issues, as I understand.
No, actually, the budget is, is, I would be, uh, but I don't even think the, the contract would be involved in the budget per se.
That's what I was wondering.
And we could, we could discuss it.
Okay.
As a separate item, uh, but doesn't really fit this resolution or even the budget.
Okay, then I'll come back with that later. It'll just be my reply.
Okay.
Yeah, because I want to know where it is on the budget discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nada. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to Resolution 2023-09? Any further discussion from the Commission? Staff, did you have anything else that needed to be added? Hearing, hearing no further discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries your names. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Item 4B is a public hearing adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2023-24. Um, Resolution 2023-10. You want to do the same, same routine?
I, I will do a similar routine. Um, this particular resolution does not need to be written or read in its entirety. It is simply a resolution adopting the budget. We've had the one public hearing at the last meeting, and now two weeks later, we have the second and final reading of the budget. There was a correction moving $60,000 from the budget per your instruction going from 6.85 mils to 6.5 mils. Uh, and that reduction has been made. Um, and this is just a matter now of adopting the budget once we have the, uh, village approved, which we just got.
Well, I'll read Resolution 2023-10. Uh, by time only, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lake Helen, Volusia County, Florida, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2023-24, providing effective date. Um, and there's not actually much more in the entire resolution than that. Um, and do I have a motion to approve? Have a second? Have a motion and a second to approve? Um, and that's the, uh, that's to adopt the budget and present. Do we need a separate motion for, for adopting the budget? Or is 2023-10 adopting the budget?
Stand and adopts the budget.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Pass Resolution 2023-10. Do I have any discussion from the Commission?
Yes. I would just like to know where that $16,000 correction or preemption happens in here. I was trying to locate it earlier and looked back through, which is now I can't seem to locate that.
Yeah, absolutely. So the, the $16,000 was the, the revenue change initially, of course, with the change in the village. Uh, 2,500 of that fill out under the legislative expenditures and general funds that would be paid, uh, 17 of the budget document, Department 511 legislative, effectively in the salaries and the fight, and they are related to the commission not, uh, saving the rate. So I'd said at the last meeting, roughly 2,000 of taxes and account that was closer to 2,500. Uh, the remainder, I'm not, uh, is on page 18, uh, under 519, other general government. What we did, and this is actually a pretty common uh, budgetary practice for many other cities, counties, and so forth, is in general, oftentimes, there's assumed that in a larger organization, you're going to have some degree of turnover, vacancies, things of that nature versus a kind of full 100% workforce every single day of the fiscal year. Uh, so in documents, the Administrator is looking at everything, understands there's some vacancies, there's just the decisions, the correction on the Parks and Recreation Director, what that position candidates look like, what that ultimately looks like, that in looking at all those vacancies at the time you're there to say, hey, we are going to have some savings per se relative to the full budget beginning Monday, uh, effectively until all of those positions get filled. So taking that safety theory of effectively kind of a non-departmental contra account to account for the fact that there will be vary, uh, vacancies, not variances, um, that that was kind of an easy way of doing that and then setting that over the course of a year. We'll see what happens, uh, with the Events Coordinator and so forth. But instead of kind of picking and saying, hey, we think this is going to get filled in December, remove two months of that position salary, things of that nature, just trying to kind of predict the future. This got us the same result. We're kind of still showing from only going to next year, a, a starting point of where we were at without those vacancies. It will help also in next year's process, keep us kind of seeing apples to apples, assuming all those positions are filled at this time next year.
Any further discussion from the Commission? Or questions, or whatever? Hearing no, all the public, if anybody wished to speak to this resolution? Hearing no, all the question. All in favor of adopting Resolution 2023-10? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Um, Got to, yeah, item four C. Mr. Eric, if you'd like to introduce that?
Yeah, again, last weekend, my brother-in-law's brother and their family got kicked out of the house and they need a replacement station. They asked a state camper at my property. So I put in a request, a request for a permit to allow temporary usage of a recreational vehicle on my property. The only thing they can hook up to is the power that keeps up anything else up. So they, I believe, they're sitting at the back, I believe that they asked an opportunity to get a house over in Lake Mac area in the second week of, the second week of October. And since the permit on allows for two weeks, you gotta request the commission for the second two weeks, and that would be before the next commission meeting. Now, fair enough, I've been asking the commission permission for the second two-week extension of that permit.
Got a motion to approve said request?
I'll make a motion to approve this request.
Got a second. Have a motion and a second to approve request for this variance from the commission. Any further discussion? Just as a noted thing, I will not vote on it because relatives, the obvious conflict of interest there, that's fine. Although, I was gonna say, don't forget to do the forms. All right, call the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Commission and staff discussion. Anything from the commissioner, starting with Mr. Eric?
No, it's time.
Uh, there was a couple items, but it could be too short. I'm gonna hold it off for the record of the commission.
I just wanna ask one person, since the cemetery is still open tonight.
Sneak out, please.
No, I did talk to Rick about it, and we're gonna be working on it. I'll just ask him to make sure.
That was an item of old business about a headstone that we had talked about once before, at the commission meetings. It's still, it's still in the works.
May I, can you repeat it because we didn't hear the question? I asked him if there had been a headstone, if the headstone I brought up months ago had been replaced yet. There was a broken headstone.
Somebody knocked it over, fractured it in half. So we gotta stick, drill some holes, rebar, glue it together, and then glue it back into the base.
We just didn't hear that.
Yeah.
That fulfills our agenda. Mr. Nado, if you'd like to take this moment to ask these questions?
I would, thank you. Of course Zach's gone now, so I, I don't, I can't really get the answer on this $5,000 contract.
It's kind of, it's not a contract agreement for this lady to do certain specific things of FEMA up to $5,000. It doesn't have to be $5,000. She works on a per hour basis.
Did you change it?
No, that's what the contract says.
No, contract, I don't. It's a start, it's a start date, an end date, and it's $5,000. And it's got your job descriptions.
Yeah, and she bills up to $5,000 per hour. Right now, she has billed a total of $8,000. That's it.
Once she gets to $5,000, regardless of if it's a year or a two years.
She, and I've, I've, I've noticed her that she has that limit, she understands that limit, she'll like over that limit.
Well, I understood that it was up to $5,000, but it was a contract, it had FEMA. So that was my concern.
Well, it's $4,000. She said her other things, it's something that she needs.
Yeah, I saw that. But I was just wondering, is it in the budget?
It is in the budget, you know, without specifics. We have, we have, as you know, personnel position that I don't want to fulfill, an outstanding, I don't want to fill. So we have significant personnel bodies available that will help that change. We just talked about some bests up there. But again, $5,000 is with my authority to do for consulting.
Is that for every contract that you write throughout the year, or is that a one $5,000 contract void?
That was just for the specific.
Okay. So if another contract comes up, you have $5,000 for that as well?
If, if it goes over $10,000, the commission has.
Okay, sorry. One last thing. Y'all need to get Ricky some help in here. And I know Ricky's working on it and I'm looking to do it at this time. But I had the most interesting conversation the other day regarding my water bill. I called because I knew that I had a leak during this last cycle. So I figured, okay, it's probably gonna cost me $300. So I called and spoke to Erin. And as we were talking, I said, can you look at my water bill? Because I know the bills are coming down. And as it turned out, I had been disconnected from the system. I still have water. I know my water bill should be more than the minimum, which I guess now is $80, which is fine with me because typically I pay about $97. But if that's happening to me, how many other people's it has to do, and how much revenue it costs?
Well, yes, that's been an ongoing discussion about the loss of revenue because of the problem with these meters. That's why we're getting ready to replace every single one of them. We're looking pretty much forward to having that revenue stream back, back online. There's a lot of meters that are out. One thing we haven't been replacing is we knew we were gonna replace the whole kit and caboo. So quite a few have failed. I don't know the number, but quite a few. That's going to be happening pretty soon. We're, we're right at the last, last two stages of that grant process and hiring, we're getting, what's the name of the group?
Yeah, we're, we're into.
Corin Maine, that's right.
Yeah, Corin Maine. We're, we're into now, who do we send the check to, and where do we deliver the product? Like, we're that far along.
And what about the meters that are under warranty that was mentioned in the?
We're all through all the, yeah. We're just gonna replace all of them. Yeah, hopefully we may have some value left of the old meters that we can reuse maybe. But our primary objective is just to continue what's online.
Okay, well, that's all I have for tonight. But that's a lot. Not that I was unhappy.
It is.
But I'm willing to, I called late. They told me I had to go to water. Do I wanna volunteer? Do I have to reap meters?
No.
Well, I'm willing to go and do the average, what I normally pay and pay it because $80 is not what I normally pay.
I have one last card from Kelly Frasca. And I will say, Ms. Frasca, you're up here on the events board, do you have?
No, I said events.
Events, oh, okay. Florence?
Hi, Kelly Frasca, six one six, John Street. I'm just here to let everybody know that we are going to have the Veterans Harvest Dinner, which is our annual dinner over with the American Legion. It's hosted by the American Legion, Post 127, and the American Legion Auxiliary, Unit 127, will also be participating as usual. We're looking for bakers for the cake walk, for donation of baked goods, and we're looking for basket donations, either a basket as a whole or items to put into a basket. And that event is on October 21st. You'll start seeing posters going up. If you haven't seen them already, you can reach out to Roger, or you can reach out to myself for, for baking and for, for the cake walk and for the baskets. My number is three zero five, seven nine three, three three zero three. Or you can email alaflunit127@gmail.com. In addition, we are open for registration for this Stress Buster 5K, which will be held on December 24th at 8:00 a.m. We're also looking for sponsors this year again. And if you have any questions, you can reach me at my email, kfrasca@lakehelen.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Frasca. Appreciate that. We have the Veterans Harvest Dinner and the Stress Buster 5K, and we appreciate your support on both of those.
You're welcome. Thank you. You're welcome.
Anything further? Hearing none. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.